Nancy Anoni, here.
Roger Schmidt.
Here.
Nicole Cohen, here.
Pat Rooney.
Here.
Joan Aberetta.
Okay, please stand for the budgeline agent.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a regime just as strong.
And please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. And right now, in the order of things, we have recognition of visitors, and I'd like to recognize the Lake Havasu Association Realtors for school supplies donation, and making the presentation will be Brenda Atkinson.
Can I invite a few of my club members here, too? Judy Tassie, Rachel Arnold, Brooke Pope, Logan Pope, Cara Pope. You never do these things alone. Aren't you presenting to me? We'll just wait in this.
Only the vice president, please.
Want me just to take it? We actually, I am a real estate broker. I've lived in Lake Havasu for a number of years. Two of these people are my children and my grandchildren. I had two of our administrative staff this year say, "I know you did this a few years ago, can we do the school supply drive again? The schools really need it." So those two administrative people were actually what got me going. They needed a mouth, and obviously I could do that for them. Which was a huge thing for us to do. They allowed us to get best retail price on whatever we were able to purchase. So what that did is if they had an advertised price of 17 cents for a spiral binder, they let us buy hundreds of those at 17 cents. So what it boils down to is we were able to donate $8,000 to the schools, and we were able to do all the schools, the high school, the middle school, and the elementary schools. Those two are two of my grandchildren, and I believe in getting kids involved. We've always worked on service projects, so they were able to help us deliver them. This was a thank you that was put in by the Home Hunter, and this tells you some of the people. We had donations anywhere from $5 to $500. So Realtors donated, our affiliates are a huge partnership for us, and then the public. We had people walk into our Association of Realtors and put a check on the counter. So I think this was the community involvement. Hopefully that involvement will carry through to the bond election that we're trying really hard on. But our community involvement is very, very important to us. Yes, I've had the benefit of having children and grandchildren in the schools, but every one of us in the association are pleased that we can help the schools. So thank you. And I'm not really sure, as I said, Mr. Rooney, when I had to come talk to him, I used to have to come talk to him sometimes as a parent, and I said, "You never lose that little feeling like, 'Hi, Mr. Rooney.'" So it was our pleasure. We plan to do this next year. For any of the teachers that are here and the principals, we got some last-minute donations, and we got gift cards. So if there is something that is going on in any of the schools, please get ahold of me. But again, I couldn't have done it without help from everyone. So these guys and these guys were incredibly important. And Judy Tassie is kind of helping the booster club at the high school with the refreshment stand, so she just never stops. So great to be your partners. Let us know how we can help. Thank you.
Brenda, would you please express our appreciation to the Lake Havasu Association of Realtors?
I will, but again, it was our pleasure. What you guys do is amazing, and what our teachers do. My daughter Brooke, who grew up in the schools here, was a teacher at Jamaica. These two go to Jamaica. So we believe in the schools more.
But what I'd like to say is that the support of the business community and members of the community make a big difference in quality schools. You know, we're all in this together. It's a partnership, and it makes a lot of difference. So please express our appreciation.
You guys are on the front lines every day. We'll be more than happy to help you. But yes, I will express appreciation with my best.
Thank you. You don't have to meet me again. Okay, the next group is welcome to the new middle school and high school teachers. So we'll start out with the middle school. Mary Jo.
I realize when I went to send my invite for tonight, I have families, and I have a lot of new babies at my school. So Mr. Coons here. There you are. And then I have one fourth teacher that was not sure he was going to make it. Well, first of all, I had a lot of openings this year, as many of us did. This is three of 10 or 11 of our new teachers. I will tell you that in the year when I was thinking, "How am I going to do this?", and over the summer, I have been beyond blessed with the quality of people that joined us this year. So I will introduce the three that could join us tonight, but just know that of our new staff, we can be more excited to have them, and they're doing amazing things with it. So I'm going to start over here with one of our Lake Havasu High School grads, formerly known as Kristy Buehl. Thankfully, because Mr. Becker was determined to get her when she decided to move back to Lake Havasu, and she has a love for middle school kids, so thrilled to that she chose us. Kristy's teaching seventh grade science for us this year, has dove in, so quickly became just a positive influence for kids and in our staff that I knew you were in your reputation as a new teacher. We've been kind of saying, "Oh, a couple of years".
Sure.
So she's been in California. So Kristy, we're so thrilled that you joined our district again, and we're beyond thankful that you moved to Central City. So thanks for everything you do for our students every day. Kristy Buehl is her new name.
And I've never had to visit Mr. Rooney for anything. He was my admin.
You don't know what you missed.
Oh, my big time, glad I wasn't there. So I have another Lake Havasu High School grad who maybe he did have to visit. Lee Miller joined us, I actually met Lee a couple of years ago, was teaching in Las Vegas, and his father lives here. And we ended up not having an opening that year. So this last year, when I had a math company, saw Mr. Miller's application and was thrilled that he came to join us, adjusting to middle school world from elementary. But I know that you're happy and your dad is happy to have you back in Lake Havasu to support you. So we were thrilled to have you. Again, thrilled that you chose Southern Bolt for our, to be with middle school kids, and you're doing great things adjusting to middle school, and for our seventh grade pre-ado student. So welcome to, and do you want to tell a story about Mr. Judy?
No. No, I'm good five past with yours. It was all good experiences.
That's awesome. All right, well, we're thrilled to have you. Welcome to Lee Miller. And Mr. Alan Coons came to us via t-shirts, and he was one of my last-minute miracle Hail Mary passes. Needed an eighth-grade algebra teacher, and I guess what he taught. And what I saw very quickly with Alan is during our registration, we needed volunteers to do some different things, and new teachers, new in town, trying to figure out where I'm going to live, all of those things. I'll sell t-shirts. So I knew that's who you were going to be. You very quickly became part of our staff, doing amazing things with our eighth-grade algebra student. So we are thrilled to have you. Again, you have very quickly become part of our staff, very active. Kids are loving it, and I know there's so much more going on in the classroom, so welcome to Mr. Alan Coons. I didn't see Mr. Bolton come in, so we will end with that. Again, couldn't be more thrilled with our new staff. We did well in our new hires, so I'm excited for you. So welcome to all.
Now, Mr. Becker will introduce the high school students. And I could see you way back there in the back row, Mr. Becker.
We only hire the ones that've never been in the office, so I do have a couple of contacts, but we don't get to know them. All six of you, come on up here and join me, and just kind of pray and do it one by one. The first person that I'm going to introduce is Stephanie Egley, who is right here to my left. Stephanie comes to us from Pennsylvania and is one of our Spanish teachers. The motivation to go into teaching, into the teaching field stemmed from her father being a high school math teacher and her mother who was a biology teacher. She saw how important it was to them to be good teachers and helping students. Being the teacher's kid was, she was raised around large groups of teachers, which also influenced her sister to teach as well. The best part about teaching, being a teacher's kid as an adult, is the fact that people still come up to Stephanie and her sister, or Facebook messaging them and telling them how much of an impact their parents had on those students in class. Interesting facts about Stephanie is that she worked at an animal rescue center in Costa Rica this past summer before moving here, and that she works at the animal shelter here, which takes care of her animal withdrawal due to leaving her animals back in Pennsylvania. She's doing an awesome job. I was just in her classroom the other day, and it's amazing what technology has done to our students. She was teaching how to tell time, and when our students look at something that is an ancient relic up on the wall, it was a difficult task to teach them on that clock, and she was more or less teaching math rather than Spanish with that lesson, and she was doing a great job. Thank you. Next person is Ashley Byerly. Ashley is one of our English teachers and graduated from NAU, and more importantly, from LHHS. Prior to coming to LHHS, she worked for Mojave Community College as a success center and tutoring coordinator, and took this opportunity to return home and fill the same role that she did at NAU while she was there. When asked what prompted her into the teaching field, Ashley stated the following. "I've always had a sort of passion for encouraging academic peers to see their potential as students. When I was approached by the opportunity to teach at LHHS, I took this as my time to use my passion for education and constant urge to gain more knowledge to encourage students to see their own potential, learning about their passions, and examine what is needed to be successful both academically and in life to achieve their dreams and live out their passions." Another side note on Ashley, I had her evaluator come to me today and say how lucky we are to have her. Evaluation time's not a fun time, even if you're a seasoned veteran in the classroom, you have an administrator sitting there taking notes, and you're wondering, "What are they writing now?". Ashley invited her evaluator into her most difficult class, and took on that challenge, and did a great job. Good job, Ashley. The next individual is Jean West. Jean comes to LHHS with 20 years of teaching experience under its belt in high school mathematics. Jean's motivation to teach comes from athletics, and this is near and dear to my heart, because this is what drew me into teaching and moving up the career ladder that I did. When he was a senior in high school, he told his soccer coach that he was going to come back and coach after he had graduated. He did just that, and as he continued through college and continued to coach, he decided that teaching would place him where he could use his energy and extrovert personality to help students succeed in life. The more he taught, his love of being in the classroom grew and made life more enjoyable. Thank you, Jean. The next individual is on the far left here, George Wagubi. George comes to LHHS after his eighteen-year internship, and is currently teaching at the University of Harvard in software development. What prompted him into the teaching field, George stated the following. "Ever since about seventh grade in my American government, I've always been inspired by an amazing school learning experience in Santa Ana, California, and the experience impacted my whole life." Interesting fact about George is that he was accepted into law school, but shows education against everyone's advice. Everyone except mine. I think he chose the correct path. Sorry, Nancy. But I think he made the right choice. He's doing a great job with our CT students and software development. Next individual is Rebecca Lidstrom. Rebecca is teaching biology for us and is also an alumnus of LHHS. When asked what prompted her into her teaching field, Rebecca stated the following. "I've always wanted to teach and wanted to inspire students to love biology, the way that my bio teacher, Mr. Mick, inspired me. Science is hard, and if you can show students your enthusiasm to understand how the living world works around you, just one of them may learn, they love it too. In her free time, she enjoys spending time with her seven-month-old son. Welcome back." Last but not least is Nathan Gress. Nathan teaches mathematics for us. When asked what brought you to Havasu, Nathan stated the following, and this is what I think is pretty cool, and we send people out recruiting, and this is a testament to those people that we sent out. During my job interview, Ms. Festa and Ms. Burke made me feel like Havasu had a very intelligent and supportive staff. I felt like they appreciated me as a person rather than just a warm body that could fill a math position. Interesting facts about Nathan are, he was a laborer for nine years, has a bachelor of science in geology from the Ohio State University.
Oh, fuck eyes.
We're friends until that last football game. Michigan will get you this year. Holds a master's for teaching, and as a hobby, was an independent professional wrestler for nine years. Welcome, Nathan.
What if we want to speak now?
There's an extrovert. Okay, the next presentation will be by our superintendent.
Shows how much I matter. And actually, Mrs. Meyer and Mr. Wolf are going to join me in this presentation. So just to give you a little bit of background, several of us attended the ASBA Law Conference in September, September 7 through 9, and spent three days attending multiple sessions in various areas of the law. For me, and I think most of you know, and I know the board does, that I am new to Arizona, so much of this was new to me, and it was quite a steep learning curve and quite a learning experience. And all of us actually learned some things that we didn't know before, which made that a valuable conference. For the board, and I don't believe we have this for everybody else, but what we have for the board is a list of the sessions, and it shows that out of all the sessions, how many of them we were able to cover during that time by virtue of us being at the conference. Now, we did commit to, and are pleased to be here to provide you an update on the Law Conference, I do want to share that we are not going to go over every session, because we would be here until tomorrow morning in doing so. So what we did is got together and decided what we thought would be of the most import to the board as a group, and so we're going to provide that update for you this evening. First part of this update is on the ESSA, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act. And so I'm going to be a little presumptuous, because I think that the history here is important. The ESSA, we talked about that, and actually was authorized in 1965. How many of you were not born in 1965? Quite a few of you. I actually was, and I was ben officiary, of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and that was President Johnson's big initiative for the war on poverty. At that time, in our country, that was a big deal. And so he initiated this, and it was authorized as Title I through VII, and about 40 percent, excuse me, it was funding so that schools and districts could enhance the education of students who were from families of poverty, and they had to have at least 40 percent of the students in poverty in order to qualify for that. That act was reauthorized every 15 years with modifications, added restrictions, et cetera, until 1981. And in 1981, it was authorized again as the ECIA. So we've got all these acronyms coming. So this was the Education Consolidation and Improvement Act, and President Reagan actually was the one that led that reauthorization. What he did at that time was reduce the regulations, and he actually tied the dollars to classrooms. So what happened in the past, and this is important in understanding and perspective, is that schools and districts got money, but all they had to do was show how they spent the money. They didn't ever have to show whether it affected any classrooms, whether it affected any students, they just had the money. And so he consolidated that, tied it to classroom dollars, and the philosophy at that time was that we would be able to see improvement in student achievement, and it was also called Chapter One. It stayed for 13 years, and then in 1994, it was reauthorized as the IASA, and that was the Improving America's Schools Act. This was under the presidency of Bill Clinton, and this reauthorization was in response to the NAEP scores. And so some of you who were alive in 94 and remember this, there was a huge gap between the United States and other countries in our students on the national and educational progress. We had books published like A Nation at Risk, et cetera. And so all of those things raised the concern as a nation of how were our students performing compared to other countries, and even compared to each other. And so at that time, they added math and language arts to the accountability, but they gave the states more local control at that time. They said, "You know, we're going to give you the money, you have control over how you spend it, but you need to be more focused on these areas." Then 2002 came around, that was eight years later, NCLD was the next authorization, No Child Left Behind. That's the one I think most of us are familiar with. That was the one that brought us the accountability for schools and for teachers being tied to the assessments. It added mandatory assessments, it added the requirement for accurate yearly progress, and it included punitive measures. One of the things that I want to say, though, and I think that from the frame of understanding, we have been getting millions of dollars for 35 years, and we never closed the achievement gap between students who are affluent and students who have poverty, or students from families of poverty. And that was why all of that accountability came in. They basically said to us, "You know, we gave you the chance, we gave you control, you didn't follow through, so now we're going to give you restrictions." We had 13 years of NCLB, and there were a lot of changes in education during that time, and a big deal was the reauthorization of ESSA in 2015. And so what we spent, because most of us, our education career was under NCLB, what we did is spent the entire morning, four sessions, on the ESSA reauthorization. So what I'm going to talk about very quickly, and I'm going to skim through a lot of these slides, is what is different in ESSA from that 13 years that we lived with under No Child Left Behind? How's that for history? Just couldn't wait to learn all of that, right? And so what ESSA does is it provides us the funding in order to support local education agencies, and what we need to do in order to collect that funding. I'm going to ask Nace to talk a little bit about the highly qualified teacher part of this, because she's involved with that. This happens to be my area in personnel, and for the last several years, even when I was at the high school as a principal, and the principals that are out in the audience know, this is what we were always striving to do, was to make sure our teachers were highly qualified, because as part of NCLB, that was what we were expected to do, was have these highly qualified teachers. Now, what that meant up until the point where ESSA came in to play was that we may hire a teacher, for instance, from Ohio, and they come fully qualified and highly qualified in the state of Ohio, but they may come to Arizona and not necessarily be. In the state of Arizona, if we had a teacher coming from another state with a standard certificate, what they would do as part of the ADE process is they would receive a reciprocal provisional certification, because they did not have all of the qualifications that the state of Arizona required them to have. And so there were a lot of hoops that they were in need of jumping through. The state of Arizona did accept some state testing, and they were able to apply that to their certification. Other states, they did not accept their state testing. So they would be expected to have all of these proficiencies on their certificate that they had between one and three years to complete in order to get a certification. So it was quite difficult, and depending on the person, the content area they were teaching, and where they may be from, and where they had their certificate from, it was all different pathways that we had to go down in order to have our teachers highly qualified. Now, with ESSA, they did not, ESSA does not retain the language from NCLB outlining the qualifications for Arizona's core academic teachers using the definition of HQ, or highly qualified. What ESSA has done is, ESSA has left it up to each individual state to determine how they will deem their teachers as appropriately certified or highly qualified. If the LEA or the local education agency receiving Title I funds, if they receive Title I funds, we do need to ensure that all of our teachers are, have applicable state certification and licenseure. The way we do, the way ADE makes sure that we do that is I have to input every single teacher we have in the district into the common login of the ADE website, listing what their certifications are, their degrees, the years they've taught, how they are appropriately certified or highly qualified. What the state is doing this year, sorry, I don't have my glasses on, is the ADE is considering the 2016-17 school year a transition year. And so currently, as I plug in all of this information for each of our teachers, they are, ADE is accepting either appropriately certified or highly qualified for this year. So interestingly, there are a lot of positives with moving to the requirements of ESSA. There are a couple of negatives. Some of the positives are if we have teachers that come from other states with standard certification, they can, and it's current, they can apply for a standard certificate with the state of Arizona if they are going to be teaching in the same content area, which is huge. There's no more reciprocal. A lot of states, their certification is social studies. In the state of Arizona, it was all broken down, so they had to be highly qualified in history if they were going to teach history, in geography, in political science, in econ. And so these teachers would come to us, and they would be highly qualified from their own state in social studies, and have to take several tests from the state of Arizona because they were not highly qualified in the state of Arizona. That has been done away with. So that will help our teachers as well. A couple of the things that are not necessarily a positive is, as I said, in the transition year this year, we have teachers who were highly qualified because of the house rubric. And those are our teachers that have been teaching in our profession for many, many years. There was not a test when they first were certified, so they were able to use a house rubric, and as long as they were able to show that they have taught for X amount of years, they have X amount of credits, and so on. So they are, they were deemed highly qualified through the house rubric. We have other teachers that are deemed highly qualified because they had 24 credit hours in the content area they were teaching. So for instance, if they were going to be teaching math and they didn't take a math test, however they took 24 credit hours of math classes, they could also be considered highly qualified. Also, if they were a nationally certified board teacher, a nationally board certified teacher in that particular content area, they could also be deemed as highly qualified. Unfortunately, beginning in the 17, 18 school year, those are not going to be able to use. It has to state on their certificate that they are appropriately certified in the content area they're teaching. So that's something that we're going to need to work with some of our teachers on. So that gives you a little idea of how we have moved from highly qualified and nickel deed to appropriately certified in ESSA. So. So I'll have to talk over to, and then I think I've already gabbed about that part.
All right, very good. All right, a couple of other areas. Under the ESSA, they have eliminated the AYP and the hundred percent proficiency requirement. However, it does require that the state develop their own state-defined index system, and there are some federal components that are required within the state plan. There is no more requirement to tie teacher performance to student achievement on one test, and, I should, sorry, and they- We still are going to be required to disseminate an annual report card as a district and tell our communities how our students are performing. Those will cover several areas, but we do have some requirements that we have to compare our students to how they perform compared to other students in the state, and we also have to break them out by subgroup and show how they can perform to other students in the state. And you remember that issue of thirty-five years of never closing that gap, that's what that's about. We have to make sure that all of our students are increasing their achievement, and we do have some new subgroups that are added under ESSA. We now have foster care, homeless, and the students with the parents in the military. What they have discovered is that often, there's a great impact of military families with students having problems, and so students move schools along their gaps. All right. One of the things we also have is the testing requirement now by state. There was always a requirement for schools to test ninety-five percent of their students. However, now, every school, every district, and the state have to test ninety-five percent of students, and every subgroup is ninety-five percent that have to test it. And then one of the requirements is that for students who are disabled, and our students who, we do have a group of students who are what we call significantly cognitively disabled, only one percent of them are allowed to have an academic assessment that is not the regular We still are required to be tested annually in grades three through eight and once in high school, and that would be ELA and math in all grades, and science in three grades, and that has not changed over that. But the state may choose to allow parents to opt out. However, if there aren't ninety-five percent of the students tested, the state has to provide consequences for the schools. So in the past, there were federal consequences, now the state is required to do that. One of the big areas is that each state is required to do a plan. So the Arizona Department of Education has to do a plan that explains to the federal government how they're going to implement ESSA, and they are required to engage in meaningful consultation. We actually have had, very recently, our state superintendent did a session in Harper, Arizona, so we had an opportunity for families to attend that, to receive input on the state plan. And one of the things that is critical to Arizona is that our state superintendent already had a plan in place, and so we have the opportunity to align our state plan for the federal government with state plan for the state. And not only one plan, we don't have to have multiple plans like with opportunities with that. And so the idea is to have one accountability system that meets all of those requirements. The required indicators that are going to be in the state plan is that we have free provision on the state test, whatever those state tests are that the Arizona decides, proficiency for our English language learners, we have to have another academic factor, so something that occurs at K-8 and graduation rates at high school, and then we have to have some sort of a student quality indicator. The state must establish long-term goals and have measures of interim progress, and again, those are the minimum areas that they identify. So you can kind of see that those are the four areas for ESSA, and Arizona's new A through F grading system will encompass those four areas for ESSA, so they'll be parallel in that respect. The one qualification that the state puts on this, and it is an important qualification, is the weighting. So for Arizona, we can't say we're going to put most of our weight on the quality indicator. Most of the weight has to be in proficiency, in growth, and in ELL. So those still have to be the highest weight in your grading system. There are still consequences in the new law, and so the state is required to have consequences. Part of the consequences are already embedded in our A through F letter grade assignment, but we also have to have school improvement designations, so those would be included. So the three possible designations that schools will have under the new law is no designation at all, which means you're doing great. You could have a targeted support school, and targeted support would mean that the district is going to be helping that school intervene, and then you could have comprehensive support school. And in those cases, those are the schools that are in the bottom five percent, and there has to be major intervention in those schools, and the state would be determining some of the ways that you could intervene. The other area that ADE is proposing is that LEAs, instead of having to have their own school plan and district LEA plan, that they can have one strategic plan that addresses all of these requirements, and having that one application and some flexibility in the funding. So the process would be, and the state is expecting that there's going to be a school needs assessment and a district needs assessment, and then the planning is going to come out of those needs assessments. What ADE has committed to is developing the needs assessment tool. So we are going to be developing our own assessment tool, ADE will be providing that, and they are basing that on the indicators of effective schools. And so if you look here, that is the list of the indicators that we know will be in the needs assessment. So do we have strong and effective leadership? Do we have effective teachers? Are we providing additional time for students who need it? Do we have the instruction program identified based on student needs and differentiated based on student needs? Are we using our data to inform the decisions that we're making? Do we have good school climate and school environment? Are our kids coming to school? Are they staying there? Are they not being suspended? Are they not calling out because they don't want to come to school? And then are we engaging our families and our communities in our schools? So that is another area. Sorry, did we laser somebody out there? All right, so our needs assessment tool, we will get that in, we're not sure exactly when, but it will look at quantitative and qualitative measures, and it will include, are we meeting the needs of some of our special populations? So it's not just about all students, it's going to be targeted for, if you have a Gates student, if you have an English minor student. And where are we now? So the state plan is currently available for comment. The timeline for our State Board of Education is to submit the plan to the governor's office, finalize anything that needs to be revised, and then actually submit it to the Department of Education in January. So most of this will be a process in that timeline, and we believe that we will get some information in the spring about our needs assessment process in the coming months. So that is what's new with ESSA. Thirty-five years later, actually more than, sixty-five, how many, I'm not on the math machine. A lot of years later. I'm going to turn it over to Aggie, who's going to talk about another session that we explored, which was kind of-
He said this is a twenty-first century issue, that's meeting twentieth century law with eighteenth century coming, which is about the truth that's been in the topics of the news, so we're going to talk a little bit about that and where we are in the law, because obviously there's some legal things that are pending, and also looking at some best practices on what we're doing to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students, and again, providing a safe, appropriate environment for every student to learn. The Office of Civil Rights is the agency that oversees and is responsible for implementing many of the federal civil rights laws, specifically Section 504, American Disabilities Act, Title IX and Title VI. Title IX, most of you, when you think about athletics, when we talk about that equality for girls and boys sports programs, and then of course, the other laws do get in to making sure they have accessibility, equal opportunities. The Office of Civil Rights can turn things over to the Department of Justice if there is a question, and we start to look at implementation, where they can come in and take a ruling on things, but they also can give guidance. And we have had a lot of Dear Colleague letters, I'm going to explain what that is. Denver is the state agency area that our particular region gets technical assistance and oversight. Well, Dear Colleague letters, just that. They're writing a letter, letting everyone know, you know where we are, and they are going to interpret some things, and tell us how to implement certain policies or procedures coming into place, but it is significant because it's going to have a financial impact in our country. And when we have to go in and change our bathrooms, bring them up to ADA compliance, that can be very expensive, and those are the laws that do have an impact on that, so they have to really look at those impacts. But it can also have a negative impact in that it can create a lot of controversy with the law being implemented and how people are seeing or interpreting that. Again, a lot of cultural things can come into play. So it's not a new law, it's guidance, and that's important to understand, so they don't have to go before and have the voters vote on it, or go through the policy procedures of weighing in on that. Like right now, we're weighing in on our education plan, everybody's asked to be part of that process, but a Dear Colleague letter doesn't require that to be done. The Title IX regulations have not changed, and that's important. We're looking at the nineteen eighty implementation, but it does specifically address that a recipient may provide a separate toilet, locker room, shower facilities in the basis of sex, that such facilities provided for students of one sex shall be comparable to the same or opposite sex, obviously, and looking at that, so we're looking at equality of the sex, or the gender. Gender is going to be a very important word, and we've been using it a lot today. We're going to talk specifically about transgender and what that means. According to the Dear Colleague letter, transgender describes those individuals whose gender identity is different from the sex they were assigned at birth. A transgender male is someone who identifies as a male that was assigned the sex organs of a female at birth. A transgender female is someone who identifies as female, but again, was assigned at birth the sex of a male on their birth certificates. The Office of Civil Rights, with their new guidance when they came out, actually did some definitions and defined, did some things that are determined by the courts at this time, that maybe they stepped beyond, and so it's important to know that and understanding of where we are at this time. But they specifically went in and defined how we should be implementing our programs and having access, and looking at that definition based on gender identity. Again, this is the sex that you identify with. And again, looking at facilities, a school may not require a transgender student to use facilities inconsistent with their gender identity, or to use individual-use facilities that other students are not required to do. So what that means is we can't put them to use one bathroom if we don't require all girls or all boys to have access to them and use that bathroom, or don't allow all boys or girls based on the assignments of those bathrooms. That would be considered discrimination based on this new guidance. Well, I'm sure all of you can probably remember, we recently had a ruling from the Texas Federal Court, which is kind of interesting because it's not the area that we normally would have, rulings coming out of the federal courts, but they did take a stance. There were many states involved in this. Arizona was part of it as a Department of Education, as were many districts that got involved as well, as individual districts and parties coming in. There are currently sixteen pending cases at this time, eight for and eight against the transgender ruling, or the, your colleague letter and that interpretation, working through that. So we probably will be seeing this going before our federal Supreme Court, so it's going to be something, we heard this about two years ago, this is going to become the new thing, as we see No Child Left Behind, its impact in education. This will be one of those court cases that will go to the Supreme Court that will have a tremendous impact one way or another on educational opportunities for students. The injunction is that, what they did come out and say is you need to stop, you cannot implement and hold accountable, because that is one of the things that the Office of Civil Rights can do. If you're found to be in violation, it's not just a slap on the hand and told to do a corrective action. You can actually be liable for civil suit, meaning you could sue and get financial benefit or money for that, which normally, that's not the case in most situations. We have an education, we have corrective actions, but Office of Civil Rights is very serious, and you can look at that piece, and again, it's about that civil rights violation. The Department of Education at the federal level cannot enforce the Dear Colleague Letter, so that's important at this time, so there's no action moving forward on that But that was about bathrooms. Transgender identity is much more than that, and that's important, that we need to look at that. We deal with students with many different diversities, working with students with disabilities, students with different cultural, religious backgrounds, and transgender identity is an area that we need to look at to help our students to be successful, to make sure we have a safe environment. So we need to start looking at some of those issues that come with this topic, and how we can best support them. At this time, we do have policies and laws that prevent discrimination, so they are already protected against harassment and those kinds of things, but we do need to be more culturally sensitive to some of the other factors that come with this situation, and helping them to be able to be successful transitioning into life. This is not students who are going through sexual change, and that's important to understand, or under hormone therapy, this is just an identity. This is when they come out and say, oh, you identify with this. So it's important to understand, we're not looking at when you're at that point, it can actually impact children at a very young age, at the elementary, middle, and high Use some names and pronouns is a big question. We currently have policy and state statutes that allows us to call a name, a child, if the parent says please call my child Billy versus William, we can do that. So we can name a child and respect that. The use of pronouns, again, best practices have been around, and we've been dealing with, oops, transgender identity for a couple decades, that I'm aware of, with my record, knowing, you know, where we've been, what's been happening in society and in education. It's not, has not been a big topic in the past, but it is now because of being, right now, we're the forefront with the law. So it's not something new, it's just the fact it's become more common with public TV reality shows, people are more aware of it. And the reality is, we've had recent legislation with some of the other rights in our society to, people are coming up, being more open about it. Again, privacy is important. We do not, under our purpose, release the sex of an individual when we talk about data, so we would not be releasing that as part of any directory information, so it is private. Records requests, when an individual turns eighteen, they're responsible and can ask to have records changed as an individual, parents can ask as well. At this time, we don't have specific state statutes that addresses this specific issue, but we have had cases by case dealing with attorneys in the past for educational records. Parents have the right to review, request records to be reviewed, ask things to be removed, but it's a permanent record, so it's something that has to be done very legally at this time, once it is official. And your, your name is on here, transcripts, and your sex identification is part of that process as well. One of the things to be mindful is obviously looking at courses. We do have a couple of courses at the high school, like freshman PE, that is identified based on boys and girls, so again, we can change the name of the course and not have to have boy or girl referencing that, and have still the opportunity to provide those courses accordingly. The athletics, again, looking at this piece, the Dear Colleague letter did come in and add a new qualifier, but here in Arizona, the Board of Arizona Interscholastic Association has already taken action to address this, and again, you're looking at it case-by-case basis, so if an individual identifies and wishes to participate based on their transgender identity, they are allowed to have that opportunity to present their case. There's a lot of different policy that I have kind of referenced within here, and these are specific ones that are currently in place that address all students, and again, looking at their protections and their rights when it comes to harassment. This is a particular group that is targeted, and is more high-risk to be victimized or to be bullied, so it's important for everyone to be aware. And again, what we can do in moving forward as a district, again, is looking at what we can do to educate and help to support those students. We are taking action at this time just to assess where we are with our facilities, and we're also working with our counseling department, again, just making sure everybody's being aware of information to help the parents and the students to be able to make good, informed decisions, and knowing what resources are available to them. Turn it over to Nisi.
Okay, a couple of other areas that I attended while I was there, teacher attraction strategies, and this happened to be a breakout session that a lot of people were attending, as you all know. Some of the areas that were discussed regarding attraction strategies, ways to certification, alternate pathways to certification- alternate pathways to certification. One of the biggies this year is the intern certification. And when I speak with the other HR directors around the state, they are all using this particular certification heavily this year. We currently have eight teachers that are, in fact, on an intern certificate. And what that entails is, this is someone who has a bachelor's degree in an area that they may or may not be in the educational field, and they are interested in teaching. So they apply for a position with our district, they're interviewed, just as any other candidate would be, and if our principal feels like they are a good fit, then we can proceed with that intern certification. They are required to participate in a program that is ADE-approved. We have this year teachers that are participating in programs at both Rio Salado and Grand Canyon University. So they do have to be accepted into that program. They do have to provide a letter showing that they have been hired by a school district. They do have to pass the content knowledge tests, Arizona tests, to show proficiency in that particular content area. They are fingerprinted and go through the various hoops, just as any other teacher would, to become certified. Now, this intern certificate is good for one year, they apply for it again the second year. It is running concurrently with the program that they are involved in at the various colleges they are attending. They are involved in a two-year program at Rio Salado or Grand Canyon University. And at that time, they are taking their coursework regarding the pedagogy of teaching. So they're, they're able to take those classes that they didn't take when they were in college, as far as the teacher preparation program is concerned. Once they have completed the two-year program and have completed two years of teaching with us, that actually serves as their student teaching, and then they are able to actually apply for a regular teaching certificate. So again, we have eight teachers currently on the intern certificates, and it is quite popular across the state this year as we look for teachers to hire. Another certification that is an alternate pathway is the STEM certification. And as you know, STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. Now, there are two options to obtaining a STEM certificate. Option A, they must have taught post-secondary in either science, tech, engineering, or math for three years, two of which need to be consecutive. They must submit a letter on college or university letterhead from an HR or department chair documenting duration and nature of the teaching assignments. And then they must have either a BS, MS, or PhD in a specific area they're going to teach, or a passing score on a STEM subject area test. Option B is, they would have 10 or more years of work experience in science, tech, engineering, or math, and a passing score on the assessment of professional knowledge at the secondary level. And again, this is only for six through 12 certification. And they must demonstrate subject matter knowledge either through their particular degree, 24 hours of STEM-relevant coursework, or a passing score on the content-specific STEM test. So currently, we do not have a STEM-certified teacher, but this is a wonderful way for us to be able to attract science and math teachers, which are very difficult to find. Student teachers, we have been very lucky in that we have student teachers coming to us, most notably from Northern Arizona University and Grand Canyon University, so particularly at the elementary level. And so we have been blessed to have them doing their student teaching for us, and then immediately hiring them for a position for that following year. So it's, it's nice that these are, most usually, students that have come back to Lake Havasu. They're from Lake Havasu, they want to live and teach in Lake Havasu. So that provides us a wealth of teachers. Letters of intent and job fairs kind of go together. We do an awful lot of recruiting in the spring, and we look to go to various states that have excellent educational programs at the various colleges. We look at what they may be paying their teachers at the time, and it may be equivalent, or maybe a little bit less than what we're paying. That, that is rare. Usually, they're equivalent, too. And so those are the job fairs that we do attend out of state. And we always attend our ASU job fair, or NAU job fair. There is a Grand Canyon University one this year, and so we always are in-state as well. Letters of intent are letters that we offer to candidates that, we are basically letting them know that we want to offer them a job. And we sign that letter of intent, they sign that letter of intent, and it's a quick way to capture someone when we are out on the recruiting trail. It can be a double-edged sword, because while we have offered a letter of intent and they've signed it, and for all intents and purposes have said they're going to come to our district, they may have 10 other letters of intent in their handbag as they walk around and talk to all the various tables of people. So it does bind us for 10 days. So it, it's tough on us, because we have no idea how many letters of intent they have signed with other districts, and we can't offer that position to anyone until it is all-avoid after 10 days. So that can be a double-edged sword. J-1 international exchange. This is actually something that we waded into this year. This is a foreign hire. The U.S. immigration law encourages international cultural and educational exchanges through the J-1 visa program. The candidate must come to the U.S. via a Department of State-approved J-1 exchange agency. We did hire a speech-language therapist this year from the Philippines through the AIC Incorporated Exchange, and they're out of San Mateo, California. We were actually, this was brought to us from Kingman and Bullhead, who both use it quite regularly and have several teachers that they have hired from the Philippines through the AIC Incorporated Group. So she is working out quite well. And I don't, where's Aggie? Do you want to add anything to that? Because she does work under your department, but...
No, it's been a really smooth transition, very quickly.
It has, it has. And Aggie and I have interviewed, we interviewed several people for this particular position, and we do Skype, so we're able to speak with them and, you know, listen to the accents, because that is one concern that many districts have when, when hiring someone from a foreign country. And then we also interviewed several people for special education positions this year that we have yet to hire. So anyway, that, that does happen to be another area that we are delving into as well. Teacher retention strategies, that was part two of this, because not only do we need to attract, but we need to retain. So some of the pieces that they spoke about during this breakout session was getting contracts out early. Early signing bonuses. Some districts, by law, teachers have 15 business days to sign that contract. Some school districts are saying, hey, get that back to us in five days so we can ensure that you're coming back, and we'll give you a signing bonus. So those were, those were pieces that were shared while we were there. Longevity bonuses for those people that stay with us about five, 10, 15, 20 years. Benefits, it's always important to talk about the benefits that are offered. We talk about this extensively when we're recruiting. Our health benefits, our 301 money that we pay out. Our Arizona State Retirement is tops in the country. We talk a lot about the community we live in, we talk about our climate, particularly when we go to Michigan, because we usually go to Michigan in March and it's snowing. So we always like to share what our weather is like at that time. We do offer educational advancement for those that continue their education. We do have paperwork for loan repayments with various federal programs for Title I schools. We have leadership opportunities and advancement in our district. We grow a lot of our own principals and so on and so forth, so that's important as well. Some of the other areas that we currently don't offer but were suggested. Some of the districts actually offer housing. They will purchase land, build houses, and actually offer houses for rent to teachers. Childcare, I know we have several teachers' children who attend a preschool at the high school, which is nice, but, you know, I know that childcare is lots of times an issue for teachers, so I know childcare is offered at times as well. So those are some, some of the areas we took a look at with regard to those two areas. And then I have one last area that I'm going to talk about, and then we're done. This is, this is about the new FSLA regulations regarding exempt and non-exempt employees. On May 18th of 2016, President Obama and the Department of Labor announced the publication of the new Fair Labor Standards Act, which will go into effect on December 1st. As you know, December 1st is in the middle of a contract here for public schools. However, the new regulations will apply. So we actually got a jump on this last spring, and were able to take care of the areas of concern regarding what will come into play on December 1st. The new regulations increase the minimum salary that must be paid to exempt administrative, executive, and professional employees. It used to be $455 per week as the threshold, and it's now $913 per week, or $47,476 a year for a full-time worker. The salary level is met for a nine- or 10-month employee, which some of our employees are, as long as the salary paid during the period of employment equals or exceeds the $913 per week. Where this comes into play for the school district is, salary level does not apply to certified teachers. Because when they first shared this with us, everyone was like, oh! It does not apply to teachers. Options if an employee does not qualify: increase the employee's salary, which is easier said than done, or move those employees to a time card, and anything over 40 hours a week would be required to pay time and a half. So those were the options we had last spring. We did have some employees that fell into this range, they were being paid salary, they didn't meet the threshold, so we did move them to a time card beginning this school year. So they were still making the same money that they were making last year, but they were simply filling out a time card versus being considered a salaried employee or an exempt employee. So some of the other areas, because the next question was, well, we have a lot of other people that work for us that are not certificated teachers, but don't necessarily meet that threshold. They do have an impact on what they call academic administrators. And this, it says academic administrators are subject to a longstanding, but seldom used before now, regulation that exempts them from overtime compensation if their salaries are equal to or greater than either the minimum salary level, which is the $913 a week, or the entry-level salary of teachers at the school where the administrator works. So that means as long as they are making at or above that entry level of the teacher. So this is where our teachers on assignment fall, our academic coaches fall, our interventionists fall. And then also, according to the exemption regulations, employees also engage in academic administrative functions as academic counselors. So that also covers our counselors. So there are a lot of caveats that cover our many areas within our school district. So some of the areas that were not deemed as being considered academic administrative functions were building management and maintenance, so some of our supervisors, student health, so those were our nurses, social workers and psychologists, lunchroom managers or dieticians. So that kind of gives you an idea of those areas that we needed to take a look at to make sure that we were meeting requirements and putting them in the correct categories. So that's all I have.
Okay, next is Lake Havasu City Educational Association.
All right, I'll be quick. Just a couple, a couple things to wrap around since the last time we were here. Two weeks ago, LHCA members, LHUSD staff, board members, and LHUSD parents went to Parker to meet with State Superintendent Dedlett. So all of that that she was describing with the SF, we were able to go down and have some conversations with her. And, which was nice, even though there was only 20, there were six people from Lake Havasu, so we had a good percentage there for us, and we all were able to openly ask her questions over and over. I mean, so some of us, a few more than others. We were also handed a flash drive when we walked in, if you wanted to take it, which was the 156-page Arizona Kids Can't Wait proposal that she is proposing, that was described just recently. And if you would like to copy, I have it in my purse. Those in attendance were able to address concerns of funding, academics, standards, new teacher certificates, receiving support for professional development for those new teachers, and for those old teachers, educating, education funding formula, accountability, and assessment. Because I know everyone is busy and still trying to stay afloat, and we're not able to make it. There is a link, it's at www.AZ, sorry, www.AZED.gov backslash weheardyou backslash. And this is where you can submit your questions and comments regarding education in Arizona, rural Arizona, and to, like, here in Lake Havasu City. So also, this month, AEA published their endorsement pamphlet, and I am proud to say that Lake Havasu City Education Association is endorsing the bond and override for Lake Havasu Unified School District, and has been working really hard collaborating with the staff and our Citizens for Havasu Schools Committee on Being Present and Vocal regarding the need for our yes, yes on the Lake Havasu Unified School bond and override. And as optimistic as we are, we are still meeting people that don't know about it, and as of Saturday. And so our job is not done. So you will see us this Saturday at opening day for soccer. We are throughout the day. The following week on the parade route at Springburg-McAndrew Park, and at the library during open voting. And so join us, we would love your support. Thanks.
Okay, Carrie, call for the public anything?
I have none.
Could I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move that we approve the consent app calendar.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anoney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, now we're going to move on to the action items.
Mr. Ray, 4.1 is the second reading of our policy on school attendance areas and parent involvement in education. There have been no changes since the board reviewed them the first time.
Carrie, can I have a motion on 4.1?
I move that we approve 4.1 as presented.
Okay, any comments?
Second. Give me a second.
Second, give me a second. Any comments?
I, I just had, wanted a clarification. On the very front page, governing board will vote to include in whole or in part, or not to include, the optional language in policy KB on 3 and 4. And when I look at 3 and 4, I'm sure I have my note there. So is it, so when we're voting on it, we're voting on the optional language?
I apologize, yes, the, the motion probably should have said to include the optional language.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to be sure. No more questions.
Nancy Anoney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes. 4.2.
4.2 is the second reading on the policy regarding the public right of way and the...
ability to carry a weapon, the rights for that, and the second reading on the removal of policy on smoking on campus. Again, there have been no changes since the board's always asked.
I make a motion that we approve, 4.2 presented.
Second.
Okay, any comments, suggestions? Carrie.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
4.3.
4.3. 4.3 is the second reading on the extracurricular activity eligibility. There actually has been some revision in the language on page 1. This particular one, there was some discussion about what are the requirements for eligibility. The language has been changed to read that students who are not working to capacity and have more than one failing grade will be withheld from participating in and traveling to any interscholastic or other related competition. So, that language is revised. The language that was added as a result of change in statute has not changed.
Can I have a motion on the?
I move that we approve 4.3 as presented.
Second.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
4.4, Brad.
It is recommended the board approve the second presentation of revised policy JFABD, Admission of Full Will Students. There has been no changes made to the policy since the first reading on September 21st.
Can I have a motion on 4.4?
I move that the board approve, action item 4.4 is presented.
Second.
Carrie.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes. 4.5, Aggie.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, it is recommended the board approve the second presentation of revised policy JLCD, Medicine and Ministering Sciences to Students. This is the second presentation. There's been changes since first.
Can I have a motion on 4.5?
I make a motion, we approve 4.5 as presented.
Second.
Carrie.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
4.6, Brad.
It is recommended the board approve the second presentation of revised policy IKF, Graduation Requirements. There has been no changes made to the policy since the first reading on September 21st.
Can I have a motion on 4.6?
I move that we approve 4.6 as presented.
Second.
Carrie.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
4.6, Brad.
It is recommended the board approve the second presentation of revised policy IKF, Graduation Requirements. There has been no changes made to the policy since the first reading on September 21st.
Can I have a motion on 4.6?
I move that we approve 4.6 as presented.
Second.
Carrie.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
4.7.
Mr. Vice President, there have been no changes to this second reading of this policy. This was the one on the public gifts and donations and the crowdsourcing.
Can I have a motion on 4.7?
I move that the board approve, action item 4.7 presented.
Second.
Any comments, suggestions? Carrie.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
4.8, Aggie.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, it is recommended the board approve the second presentation of revised policy IHLCD, Medicine and Ministering Sciences to Students. This is the second presentation. There's been changes since first.
Can I have a motion on 4.7?
I move that the board approve, action item 4.7 presented.
Second.
Any comments, suggestions? Carrie.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
4.8, Aggie.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, it is recommended the board approve the second presentation of revised policy IHLCD, Medicine and Ministering Sciences to Students. This is the second presentation. There's been changes since first.
Can I have a motion on 4.8?
I make a motion, we approve 4.5 as presented.
Second.
Carrie.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
4.7, Brad.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, it is recommended the board approve the second presentation of revised policy IHLCD, Medicine and Ministering Sciences to Students. This is the second presentation. There's been changes since first.
Can I have a motion on 4.7?
I move that the board approve, action item 4.7 presented.
Second.
Any comments, suggestions? Carrie.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
4.8, Aggie.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, it is recommended the board approve the second presentation of revised policy IHLCD, Medicine and Ministering Sciences to Students. This is the second presentation. There's been changes since first.
Can I have a motion on 4.8?
I move that we approve, 4.7 as presented.
Second.
Carrie.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
4.7.
Mr. Vice President, there have been no changes to this second reading of this policy. This was the one on the public gifts and donations and the crowdsourcing.
Can I have a motion on 4.7?
I move that the board approve, action item 4.7 presented.
Second.
Any comments, suggestions?
I appreciate that the language is very specific. That separate parent permission is going to go out for any survey issued under that subsection D.5. I feel comfortable with that at this point, so I appreciate it.
Any other comments? Okay, Carrie.
I need a motion.
Oh, I think I have a motion. We also have a motion.
I did not hear a motion. Or a second.
I move the two second.
I'm moving to press for the.
Yes. I guess I was writing something else. Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
4.9.
4.9 is a related policy that was tabled in this coming back first presentation. This is in relation to educational research agencies. This policy is an existing policy. We originally were adding that same language that I just read under the student survey policy. We're also deleting the entire section beginning at the bottom of page 1 as not really appropriate for consideration. So, this basically just says that we will not administer these surveys as noted in the previous policy and that should the research agencies approach us with requests to administer surveys, these six, six areas will be considered in making that decision. Those are the changes to this particular policy.
Can I have a motion on 4.9?
I move that the board approve, item 4.9 is presented.
Second.
Any comments, suggestions?
No, I appreciate it. The same specific language. Thank you.
Carrie.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
4.9.
4.9 is a related policy that was tabled in this coming back first presentation. This is in relation to educational research agencies. This policy is an existing policy. We originally were adding that same language that I just read under the student survey policy. We're also deleting the entire section beginning at the bottom of page 1 as not really appropriate for consideration. So, this basically just says that we will not administer these surveys as noted in the previous policy and that should the research agencies approach us with requests to administer surveys, these six, six areas will be considered in making that decision. So, those are the changes to this particular policy.
Can I have a motion on 4.9?
I move that the board approve, item 4.9 is presented.
Second.
Any comments, suggestions?
No, I appreciate it. The same specific language. Thank you.
Carrie.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
4.10. Denise.
Mr. Vice President and members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the attached administrative performance pay plan and Exhibit A Administrative Performance Pay Plan Criteria for the 2016-2017 school year. On September 11th, 2012, the governing board approved an alternative procedure to meet the requirements of Senate Bill 1263, Arizona Revised Statutes 15-341A40. With the alternative procedure, the principals, assistant principals, and directors will receive an equal portion of a designated sum if they meet all requirements. The breakdown of the requirements will be as follows: 25% for academic gain, 25% for parent satisfaction, 25% for professional development, and 25% teacher satisfaction. The criteria for the percentages will be listed on a contract addendum for the positions listed above. The attach has previously been approved by legal.
Can I have a motion on 4.10?
I move that we approve, 4.10 is presented.
Second.
Any comments, suggestions?
No, but just for the purpose of people that are here that don't know, what was the criteria? We've moved to the four, right?
Yes.
But before, it was three. So, what was the addition?
The teacher satisfaction.
So, the teachers are being surveyed on the satisfaction of the administrators.
Correct. Which they have always been in the past, but it has not been.
Right of this.
Sure.
Okay, any other comment? Carrie.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
5.1, which is Lake Havasu. Mr. Mercy. Okay. And Mr. Giselle.
Good evening, Vice President, members of the board. It is recommended that the governing board approve the Natale's First and Second Grade Trip to Mandalay Bay Shark Reef in Las Vegas, tentatively on November 18th, 2016. Students will be able to see, feel, and learn about various marine lives which aligns to the First and Second Grade Science Standards.
How many kids are going? Can I have a motion on 5.1?
I move that we approve, 5.1 is presented.
Second.
Comments, suggestions?
How many kids are going?
We currently have 60 first graders and about 55 second graders, so.
110 or so, something like that.
Yes.
And how many chaperones?
We will have at least one chaperone for every 10 kids. I believe the policy is one for every 15, and we go one for every 10.
Okay. Anything else? Carrie.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, 5.2, Mr. Giselle.
Yes, thank you. It is recommended that the governing board approve the Natale's Fourth Grade Trip to Discovery Children's Museum in Las Vegas, Nevada, tentatively on November 18th, 2016. Our fourth graders will receive hands-on, unexperienced with various activities which aligns to the Fourth Grade Science Standards.
You said November 18th. It looks like this is November 4th. Oh.
The 18th is the first and second grade trip. The November 4th is the fourth grade trip.
Okay.
Same scheme on, wait a minute. I move that we approve 5.2 as presented.
Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve, 5.2 is presented.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, Carrie.
Go right.
Same scheme with chaperones?
Yes.
All right. That's the biggest problem we run into. We're making progress. Carrie.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
5.3.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, it is recommended that the governing board approve the Starline 3rd through 6th Grade Gifted Classroom Trip to the Titanic, the artifact exhibit, and the Discovery Children's Museum in Las Vegas, Nevada, set for November 8th of this year, 2016.
Can I have a motion on 5.3?
I move that we approve, 5.3 is presented.
Second.
Carrie.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
5.4. Okay, you're going to do that? Okay.
Mr. Ray, members of the board, we had brought to the board a dual enrollment agreement for the Lake Havasu District and Mojave Community College District so that we may have our dual enrollment courses. In the process of reviewing this agreement, Mrs. Cohen actually noted that, and was accurate in that there were two areas in the contract that are reflective of language that is no longer valid. On page 3, it reflects the Arizona Instrument to Measure Standards Test, which is the AIMS test, which is no longer administered. And it also refers to the SACE Accountability System for Students, which is also no longer the accountability, or excuse me, the information system, student information system. So, we did request initially that this agreement be revised. However, the Community College District has a statewide contract, and we were unable to revise this at this time. So, we did receive a grant from the governing board, and there is a letter included in the board packet that should the board approve the agreement, and we are recommending the board approve the agreement, that we would include this letter indicating that we would no longer be, that we would not be able to comply with those two items as they are no longer applicable.
Okay. Can I have a motion on 5.4?
I make a motion, we approve, 5.4 is presented.
Second.
Carrie.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
5.3, Aggie.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, it is recommended the board approve the second presentation of revised policy IHLCD, Medicine and Ministering Sciences to Students. This is the second presentation. There's been changes since first.
Can I have a motion on 5.8?
I move that the board approve, action item 5.8 is presented.
Second.
Okay, any comments?
I just wanted to, and it's nothing personal. I know that some of them are very specific, but I just fundamentally have a problem with one of our first grade standards having anything to do with electronic menus. And I just, I want to go on record as stating that because we all know I have those concerns.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, Carrie.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
5.7, Brad.
Mr. Ray, governing board, it is recommended the board approve the first presentation of revised policy IKERB, Promotion and Retention of Students. For Arizona School Boards Association Policy Services Advisory's dated July 2016, the following policy revision is being presented, policy advisory number 554, policy IKERB, Promotion and Retention of Students. House Bill 2190 initiated changes to a number of education or education-related statutes.
It is recommended that the governing board approve the Natale's fourth grade trip to Discovery Children's Museum in Las Vegas, Nevada, tentatively on November 18th, 2016. Our fourth graders will receive hands-on experience with various activities, which aligns to the fourth grade science standards.
You said November 18th. It looks like this is November 4th.
The 18th is the first and second grade trip. The November 4th is the fourth grade trip.
Okay.
Same scheme on... Wait a minute. I move that we approve 5.2 as presented.
Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve 5.2 as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Carrie.
Go right. Same scheme with chaperones?
Yes.
All right, that's the biggest problem we've run into or making progress. Carrie.
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes. 5.3, which will be Mrs. White and Mrs. Agus? Okay, you're going to do this?
I'll be Mrs. Agus. I'm about a foot shorter than she is, so... Mr. Vice President, members of the board, it is recommended that the governing board approve the Starline 3rd through 6th grade gifted classroom trip to the Titanic, the artifact exhibit, and the Discovery Children's Museum in Las Vegas, Nevada, set for November 8th of this year, 2016.
Can I have a motion on 5.3?
I move that we approve 5.3 as presented.
Second.
Carrie.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Now, 5.4. Okay, you're going to do that? Okay.
Mr. Re, members of the board, we had brought to the board a dual enrollment agreement for the Lake Havasu District and Mojave Community College District so that we may have our dual enrollment courses. In the process of reviewing this agreement, Mrs. Cohen actually noted that, and was accurate in that there were two areas in the contract that are reflective of language that is no longer valid. On page 3, it reflects the Arizona Instrument to Measure Standards Test, which is the AIMS test, which is no longer administered. And it also refers to the SACE Accountability System for students, which is also no longer the accountability, or excuse me, the information system, student information system. So we did request initially that this agreement be revised. However, the Community College District has a statewide contract, and we were unable to revise this at this time. So we did receive the agreement, and there is a letter included in the board packet that should the board approve the agreement, and we are recommending the agreement, that we would include this letter indicating that we would no longer be, that we would not be able to comply with those two items as they are no longer applicable.
Can I have a motion on 5.4?
I make a motion we approve 5.4 as presented.
Second.
Any comments? Carrie.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney? Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
I think you can, you go on.
5.5, Denise.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the following administrators and certified staff as qualified evaluators for the 2016-2017 school year. The individuals have received the necessary training as required by ARS 15-537D and are delegated the authority to issue written preliminary notices of inadequacy of classroom performance.
Can I have a motion on 5.5?
I move that we approve 5.5 as presented.
Second.
Carrie, any comments? Okay, Carrie.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
5.6, Denise.
Mr. Vice President and members of the board, it is recommended that the governing board approve the following performance pay site-based goals for the 2016-2017 school year. Lake Havasu Unified School District has high expectations for our students, teachers, and administrators. Each year, our building sets goals to improve student learning. Goals include student achievement, professional development, parent communication, and involvement. And principals will share how these goals fit in with the district targets, including literacy, math, curriculum mapping, and capacity building. Each site in developing their goals looks at data and discusses priorities with their staff. Three of our schools have chosen math as their goals with focus on number sense and operation skills. Through the use of L to J, mini-math, intervention strategies, and collaborative planning, post-assessments will provide data showing growth in these areas. The remaining five schools have chosen ELA goals with focus on academic vocabulary, reading fluency, text structures, and comprehension. Through the use of L to J, Marzano key vocabulary strategies, and verbal scaffolding, post-assessments including but not limited to STAR and DIBELS will provide data showing growth in these areas.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion on 5.6?
I move that the board approve Action Item 5.6 as presented.
Second.
Okay, any comments?
I just wanted to, and it's nothing personal, I know that some of them are very specific, but I just fundamentally have a problem with one of our first grade standards having anything to do with electronic menus. And I just, I want to go on record as stating that because we all know I have those concerns.
Any other comments? Okay, Carrie.
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
5.7, Brad.
Mr. Re, governing board, it is recommended the board approve the first presentation of revised policy IKE-RB Promotion Retention of Students. For Arizona School Boards Association Policy Services Advisory's dated July 2016, the following policy revision is being presented. Policy advisory number 554, policy IKE-RB Promotion Retention of Students. House Bill 2190 initiated changes to a number of education or education-related statutes. Corresponding changes have been made to policy documents based on the statutory language that has been added or deleted.
Can I have a motion on 5.7?
I move that we approve 5.7 as presented.
Second.
Any comments? Okay, Carrie.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
5.8, Brad.
Mr. Re, governing board, it is recommended the board approve the first presentation of new policy instruction and training in cardiopulmonary resuscitation. For Arizona School Boards Association Policy Services Advisory's dated July 2016, the following new policy is being presented. Policy advisory number 553, policy IHAMC Instruction and Training in Cardiopulmonary Resuscitation. Senate Bill 1137 amended ARS 15-718.01 and 43-1089.01. Related to school curricula, the substance of this legislation directs school districts and charter schools to offer instruction and training in cardiopulmonary resuscitation as a mandatory, not a discretionary duty. CPR instruction and training is required to be provided no later than July 1st, 2019. A new document, IHAMC, has been created for this required instruction. ARS 43-1089.01 addresses tax credits and the executive end is expanded to include cardiopulmonary resuscitation training pursuant to Section 15-718.01.
Can I have a motion on 5.8?
Move that the board approve Action Item 5.8 as presented.
Second.
Any comments?
What was the funding for that? How much funding are they giving us for that?
I doubt any... Another mandate.
Anything else? Okay, Carrie.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
5.9. Is this you, Brad? I don't know. We're moving along real good, so...
I'll do it.
He's going to make the decision.
Mr. Rooney, governing board, it is recommended the board approve the first presentation of revised policy JFB Open Enrollment. For Arizona School Boards Association Policy Services Advisory's dated July 2016, the following new policy is being presented. Policy advisory number 558, policy JFB Open Enrollment. ARS 15-816.01 has been revised by HB 2665 to allow school districts to give enrollment preference to children who are in foster care and to allow charter schools as authorized in addition to ARS 15-183 to give enrollment preference to children who are in foster care to meet the definition of unaccompanied youth prescribed in the McKinney-Ventil Homeless Assistance Act.
Can I have a motion on 5.9?
Make a motion we approve 5.9 as presented.
Second.
Okay, any comments? Okay, Carrie.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
5.10, Missy.
Governing Board, the business office is seeking permission to proceed with the issuance of a request for proposal for audit services. The district last issued an RFP for audit services in 2012 and contracted with an audit firm for one year with four one-year renewals, which concluded in the audit of 1516 fiscal year. The auditor general's office has provided a sample request for proposals. The completed RFP will be available and has been given to all board members prior to this meeting. A copy of the proposed contract with an auditing vendor must be submitted to the auditor general for approval before the contract is signed and any audit work begins. The school district must award contracts by the competitive sealed proposal method. When awarding the contract to the lowest responsible bidder is neither practicable nor advantageous to the district. The process to procure audit services using competitive sealed proposals is set forth in the School District Procurement Rules R 7-2-1061 through R 7-2-1068.
Okay, can I have a motion on 5.10?
I move that we approve Action Item 5.10 as presented.
Second.
Okay, any comments? Carrie.
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Smith? Pat Rooney?
Yes.
5.11. That could be Diana.
Vice President Rooney, members of the board, the ASBA has proposed changes to its bylaws and has requested that the board consider and vote on those changes as a unit. The proposed changes are noted for you with explanations and rationale, which I will not review. However, they are provided to you as proposals in the backup documentation. There are proposals A through F. Proposals A, B, and C are changes to the bylaws in different areas, and it does state who they are proposed by. Proposals D, E, and F are all relating the same actual item as far as the bylaws go, which is related to changes wishing to run from the floor. So this information is presented to the board. The board can discuss and choose to either act on this or act on the future meeting. The voting is required to be completed by December 5th.
Okay, can I have a motion on 5.11?
I make a motion that we table 5.11 until our next meeting.
Second.
Any comments? I'm in favor of that, too. I'd like to look over this, and I'd like to investigate it a little bit before we go ahead. We've got plenty of time to go ahead and send this in, so I'm in favor of that also.
Can hash it out in the next work session and go through it and discuss it.
All right, Carrie.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
5.12. Missy.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
5.12, who's doing that?
I can do it.
Okay.
5.12. This is a recommendation that comes out of Revised Statute 15-1028. As you recall, the AFR was presented to us at the last meeting, and there were some excess taxes that were collected as a result of closing the previous bond. And so, excuse me. 15-01028 addresses that the governing board has an option if there is a balance remaining and the bond and interest has been fully paid, the district governing board may request that the reduction be, that the remaining be used to reduce the school district taxes and go back to the taxpayer. So there is a letter attached for you to consider, to be signed by the board if you would like to pursue that avenue of requesting that those taxes be returned to the taxpayer.
Carrie, can I have a motion on 5.12?
I make a motion we approve 5.12 as presented.
Second.
Any comments?
You know, for 748,000 that's sitting in there, I think this is a good idea. As soon as Diana catches her breath, I'd like for her to explain how it works.
Apologize. What the, thank you. What the law allows is that when there is excess revenue, if there is a bond election forthcoming, which we currently have, that either of these taxes can be used, and I'm going to say this wrong, but basically used to reduce the amount of the bond issuance so that that money does not have to be taxed to the taxpayer. So that is one way of reducing them. Or if the bond doesn't pass, then it can be returned to the taxpayer. So either way, the taxpayer would see the benefit of having already paid these taxes and not be charged for it.
So, so basically, you could use the 748,000 to cut the first bond sale down and effectively return that money to the taxpayer.
Correct. If that proposal passes, that would be effectively returned that way, and if it doesn't, it would be returned.
I just want to say that it was, it was interesting that, I guess it hasn't been done before. Nobody was really aware at the county level about how to proceed. They're like, this has never happened before. We need to do some research. So that went through multiple agencies, and, but there is a statute.
There is a statute.
Missy, were you going to say something?
No, that's okay.
Yes. It was, it was interesting in the search for the statute. And actually, it was Missy who found the statute. The one that, that the county first found was...
Was different.
A little bit different. And so, this was, I thank you for Mrs. Cohen, who suggested that this be a consideration for the board. I think that's great that we can do it.
Carrie.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
And the final thing, I see...
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
I will need your signatures after.
The last item is informational item.
I think we gave you a lot of information at the beginning of the meeting, so I do want to just highlight a couple of our gifts because I, I'm always impressed, as it has been stated earlier, by how giving this community is. We did have our Association of Realtors, who we recognized at the beginning of the meeting for the $8,000 in supplies. We also have had the Jamaica PTSO donate almost $5,700 in order to purchase the Renaissance London Program for Jamaica. And then, one of the most unique things that I've experienced in my career is we had an anonymous donor who provided a $10,000 cash donation for Havasupai with the request that they be spent on art, PE, library, science, office supplies and Havasupai, at Havasupai. And that really, the softness is that this is a true donation. This individual did not want credit for the donation, did not want a tax credit for the donation, wanted to give and have Havasupai benefit from that generosity.
Any other comments by board members? You might be interested in this. I was reading the Arizona Republic, and on the real estate section, they had growing options for young families in Arizona. And how they determined what cities got on it is, does the town have good public schools? Is the town affordable? Is the town growing and prospering? And this was in this Sunday's section. And in it, the communities were Oro Valley, Scottsdale, Buckeye, Peoria, Chandler, Sierra Vista, Lake Havasu, and Prescott. And I just think that things like that, the community needs to know. And it's just like this 10,000 anonymous donation or the Lake Havasu City Realtors coming in. But over the years, when I've been, since I've been here since '71, the community's been more than generous. And the school district, even though, and sometimes it seemed like we were fighting uphill because of funding and all that, the school district has gone beyond it. So it isn't just this year that we've had these very good schools. It's over a long period of time. And a lot of people need to get credit, but particularly the community, the business community, the parents and what their expectations are. Over the years, whether I was an administrator or whatever, we've had boards that are very committed to education. We've had administrators that wanted to get the best people in front of the classroom and worked hard to set high standards. We've gotten quality people into the classroom, and that's where they make a difference. And you can't just leave, give the credit to them. I'm giving the credit to the entire staff, whether it's custodians, whether it's the secretaries, it's all of us working together. And when I say all of us, I'm not just saying the people in education, but the whole community. If that's their expectation, and this points out that it benefits all of us. The immediate benefit, of course, is the kids because they go on and they do good things. And I could cite many, many that have. But the thing is, it benefits the whole community because people see that. And we're recognized as one of those communities. So I really, when I read that and I started looking at it, and we're the only community in western Arizona that got it. So congratulations to the whole town. That's the way I would... I hope that was short enough because can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Thank you.